Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Zwort.
Here.
Alderman Stray.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. Before we get started with the public hearing, anybody that would like to speak at the hearing, there are blue cards up at the podium. Please fill them out, name and address. And since we have a large crowd, and we did have this public hearing at the Plan Commission, what I'd like to do is, on the card it states, "Please limit your comments to three minutes." We're going to try to get as many people in, but we're going to try to limit the time to three minutes per person. And if someone said something, I don't, we don't need to have it repeated a bunch of times, just if it's been repeated or been commented on, please try not to duplicate it, okay? So, the public hearing, the purpose of the hearing is to hear public comment regarding rezoning of a planned development overlay district on property located at the northeast corner of East Wisconsin Avenue and North Lapham Street. The tax key is OCOC0564027003. The applicant is requesting a planned development overlay while maintaining the underlying general commercial zoning to allow site development flexibility for Casey's General Store with gasoline sales. Jason, you want to give a preview of the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. I will give a brief presentation regarding the public hearing. For Casey's General Store, this request tonight, that is be, that we're having the public hearing on, is a rezoning application. The current zoning of the site is general commercial, and the rezoning request would be to create a planned development overlay district. So it's a rezoning that keeps the underlying zoning the same, but puts a planned development overlay on top. Second item that this particular use is asking for is a conditional use permit. That is an allowed use, but we can put conditions on it. It's for the gasoline sales in particular. All gas stations require a conditional use permit. The property is located at the northeast corner of Lapham and East Wisconsin Avenue. It's outlined in red. This slide is an aerial photo. It shows Wisconsin Avenue to the south, Sheldon Road to the east, and Lapham to the west. To the north is a detention pond, and there's also a couple of residential homes. Further to the east, there's the VFW area. What's noteworthy on this slide, I highlighted well number two is shown. It is within the distance of our wellhead protection area. The well number two is approximately 1,000 feet from the site, and therefore, you know, it is, falls within our wellhead protection area. We can have a gas station within this area, but we can require stricter environmental protection measures. It should be noted that there is a gas station immediately adjacent to well number two, just on the, on the west side. So I'd like to just show the common council and the audience members some of the context of the area. To the north, I mentioned, there's two residential homes. This is one of the homes in particular that is immediately adjacent to the property. We have the VFW post to the east, and Sheldon Road is to the east. Those parking stalls are actually within the public right of way, and that's Sheldon So you can see the Sheldon Road and the VFW parking stalls. To the south, which would be on the opposite side of Wisconsin Avenue, the city owns some vacant land next to the auto parts parking lot. And then to the west, it's a little hard to see, but I took this picture more for the trees, but it does show, to the west, there's a residential home, and then there's some businesses beyond that. So that's kind of your context. The site itself currently is vacant, except for some trees. So here's a site plan. I understand it is a little difficult to understand what's happening, but we're all familiar with the, the shape of the lot. The blue area is the proposed building, and that's why they need the flexibility. The rear lot line, which would be the lot line between the subject property and the residential home, requires a 20-foot setback from the building, and they're proposing an approximate 10-foot setback. So they need a, an exception of 10 feet along that rear property line. What I've turned on now is some of the, in yellow is the residential homes and the residential garage that is directly to the north, to give you some idea of the relationship between where the building would be compared to the garage. And then the, the gas pump sales, they are showing the 12 pumps down there for the gasoline I want to go back to this slide because that driveway is really, the, the concrete edge is the edge of their property line. So the 10 feet is where the building would be off of that lot line. That's the request that they're making, which I didn't measure off where 10 feet is on this slide. I did walk it, but I think it'd be approximately where the garbage can would be. Being a planned development, there is some trade-off. They give a public benefit in return for the flexibility. They said that they will improve Sheldon Road area. So they would donate up to $100,000 in improvements for Sheldon Road, and I've talked to the applicant, and they would actually extend that offer to make improvements for any transportation related, if it was Wisconsin Avenue, traffic signals at Lapham, because there was a lot of express concerns expressed during the Plan Commission meeting. So with that, I'll just sum up here. This is for the PD zoning and a conditional use permit for gas sales. The Plan Commission did postponed action on January 10th for both the zoning and this conditional use. The Plan Commission really asked to see the full set of site plans to accompany the zoning and conditional use. There was concerns raised about lighting and landscaping and things that, and drainage that maybe pertain more to the entire package. So they'll wait. There was also questions raised because the Architectural Commission also postponed plans, and the Plan Commission wanted to see, well, what is that going to look like? So they waited until they could see updated plans that the Architectural Commission are reviewing. Finally, it is not on tonight's agenda for any formal action. It's just on, we did notice it as a public hearing to get feedback. I think this is beneficial for the council to hear the, the comments of the, of the residents as well as the applicant. So with that, I can leave the site plan up and continue with the hearing.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We're going to open up for public comment. Again, like Jason said, we will not be debating or discussing this at all. I mean, after the public hearing, it'll move on to the regular agenda, but nothing on this particular subject. So anybody that would like to speak, I'm going to call off names, and as you come up, do your comments.
No.
Ryan Swanson?
Here.
Go down by the, to your left a little bit.
There you go. Right in front of me. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Your Honor and council members. My name is Ryan Swanson. With me tonight is a real estate associate from Casey's, Kendra Meyer. And if it pleases you, she's also got a card.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
As her own.
I'm going to let her kind of lead things off here.
So, Mayor and members of the council, as mentioned, I'm Kendra Meyer. I'm with Casey's General Stores, and I just wanted to start off and give a very brief history. I know we're limited on time here, but for those of you who have not heard of our company, we were founded in 1968 in Boone, Iowa. We are a publicly traded company. Currently, we have over 2,000 stores in 15 states, and we're quickly approaching our 16th state. In 1985, we introduced our homemade pizza. Since then, we have expanded our food offerings in store to have made-to-order sandwiches, wraps, donuts made fresh every day. The dough is made fresh every day in our store. Nothing is frozen. That has led us to be the fifth-largest pizza, pizza chain in the United States and 10th-largest bakery in the United States. We operate two distribution centers, one in Ankeny, Iowa. We recently opened one in 2016 in Terre Haute, Indiana. The benefit of this is that it allows us to, to deliver approximately 90% of our in-store products as well as 75% of our fuel products. So we have the ability to make sure that we are delivering the quality that we promised to you. We are a community partner. We contribute more than five, last year, we contributed more than $4.5 million to the communities that we live, work, and play in. And I know that it came up previously, that the question of, does Oconomowoc need another convenience store? And there is no scientific proof to say, yes, you absolutely do, or no, you absolutely do not. I can tell you from my history, having developed convenience stores for the last five years, and then looking in, in neighboring towns nearby, the average for the neighboring towns nearby, which be, I looked at Peewaqui, Fort Atkinson, Jefferson, was about one for every 588 people. And with Oconomowoc, including Casey's being part of that, based on your 2016 population, it's just around that figure as well. So just something to note. As mentioned, we would propose to provide up to $100,000 for improvements for this project, and that can go towards, improvements towards Sheldon, or towards Lapham, or update to signals, whatever we feel would be, or you feel would be, the best benefit for this Just an example of our menu. We do actually, we recently rolled out our phone application and online ordering. We also have pizza delivery and food delivery, so you can go online, and we deliver generally within a five-mile radius. So that's one of the reasons that we like to be near residences, because we do very much promote our fresh food offerings.
My name is Ryan Swanson. I'm with Arc Design Resources. We are the engineering consultants for the project primarily, and I just want to address a few issues briefly. Some of the concerns that came up last week as well, and just try to hit on a few of those things. We take the concerns from the neighbors very seriously, and, you know, continue working with staff as we work on the site plan and architecture to, you know, implement those, address those concerns as well. Really, the logic for the planned development overlay is to give us some flexibility on a relatively odd-shaped site, obviously with a contribution to infrastructure. But also, in conjunction with that, we are looking at improvements in the rear to try to mitigate any of the impacts to the neighbor in terms of fencing, likely some enhanced architecture. You know, we're not just ignoring the rear of the store because the majority of folks won't necessarily see it. We do want to carry some upgrades to the rear as well. I also want to mention that the convenience store element and the fuel sales use is allowed in this general, general commercial district. The fuel sales requires the conditional use. And really, what that allows us to work with staff and come up with a, you know, a good project, really any other, a host of other businesses could go on this corner, the conditional use allows us to work together and, like I said, put together a first-rate effort that everyone can be happy with. Regarding traffic, I've worked on traffic studies in probably four different states in my career, and gas stations, fuel, fuel stations and convenience stores really don't contribute to added traffic, or they don't create additional traffic that much compared to many, many other retail uses. What they do is pull traffic off the existing system, which we call pass-by trips. And a majority of trips, when you do a traffic study, are pass-by trips for this sort of use. And it's, that's a recognized standard by Wisconsin DOT and by many other state DOTs. It's just a accepted standard, just speaking, you know, naturally, you're going to not be at home and decide to go get gas after you've been home from work. Typically, people just don't do that. But it is, you know, taking advantage of the convenience element, pulling traffic off of the existing, you know, within the existing system known as pass-by trip. So we understand the concerns at the intersection, and as mentioned, we're willing to work with, you know, the city if there is issues there. But in reality, we're not contributing to the problem so much as, like I said, taking advantage of the traffic that's already out there. The environmental issues are a concern, especially in proximity to the well. I want to just touch on that a little bit more. The systems that are in place are heavily regulated, as they should be. Nobody wants to see any, any leak at all. And really, it starts with the tanks themselves. They're double-walled fiberglass with a void system. Basically, it's monitored 24/7. It's monitored for not only leaks outside, but moisture inside. Those monit, those, those monitors are checked regularly by federal and state mandate. From there to the distribution system, those are double-walled, pressure-tested, so loss in pressure is detected immediately. If anything is detected in either system, it's shut down, product is removed immediately, and the state would be notified, and it'd be corrected without question. Even the fuel dispensers themselves, the hoses have cutoffs, there's, there's containment underneath those in case those leak. So really, there's multiple systems in place for secondary containment if, if something ever happens. It's controlled. Noise was a concern. Really, the noise that comes off of either equipment or customers, vehicles, a lot of that noise will be lost with the ambient traffic on the streets. Not only that, but really, the proximity of the majority of our neighbors to the north, due to distance roughly 500 feet to the nearest home, a lot of that noise would be dissipated at any rate. But mostly, activity being in front of the store, that noise would be blocked by the building. Lighting concerns, again, those can be addressed. The majority of lighting will also be in front of the store facing the road. Store hours, I wanted to just touch on that real quick, just because it was a concern. This store would likely have hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Excuse me, it would not be a 24-hour store, just to clarify that, is a concern. And really, in summary, we continue to work on our site and architecture improvements, our plans. We've got good feedback from the Architecture Review Board. We're currently working on those comments, and really constructive comments, and we'll continue working on those to make a, a full submittal in the near future. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, Barb Jamerson?
My name is Barb Jamerson. I live in the subdivision directly north of the proposed Casey's General Gas Station. Mayor Nold, Alderman Zwort, and Alderman of the Common Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your patience while I read what I've written. I will provide you with a copy if you like when I'm done. I would first like to state that I embrace new development and beautification of the eastern corridor of Oconomowoc. However, I must go on the record and state my strong opposition to approve the rezoning planned development overlay, and especially the CUP requested by Casey's General Store and Gas Station. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight a few of my concerns and why I oppose this project for your consideration. Number one, pedestrian and traffic safety. The intersection of Wisconsin Avenue and North Lapham Streets is already a danger zone. As we spoke at the Planning Commission last week, vehicles traveling on Wisconsin Avenue often run the red light and disregard the right-turn-only lane on the westbound side of Wisconsin Avenue. I have myself experienced several instances of near misses, and I have waited to make sure that the cross-traffic stops before I proceed. I've also heard countless near-miss stories from other residents in our subdivision. Adding heavy tanker traffic accessing Casey's on Lapham Avenue would increase the risk of accidents by vehicles entering Lapham from Wisconsin Avenue. Number two, restriction of setback requirements. The sidewalk parallel to Wisconsin Avenue on the north is used by children on foot and on bicycles, along with adults who currently access existing businesses on the eastern corridor. The proposed setback reduction would place the hard surface too close to the sidewalk, which would make it a high accident-risk pathway. The 10-foot rear setback would bring the fencing structure right up, well, I'm incorrect in that, but would be 10 feet off of the existing edge of the driveway. This reduction in setback allowance could potentially inhibit any future enhancement or development of the improved properties on Sheldon. Number three, location of underground fuel tanks. These tanks are extremely close to the retention pond located on the north end of the vacant land. This is where it actually becomes personal, not only to me, but to the other 112 families in our subdivision, as well as all the residents in Pioneer Ridge condos. You see, our HOA and the condo HOA share the cost of maintaining that retention pond to meet not only the city's requirements, but also the state. I would like to point out that when the DNR returned governance of retention ponds to the local municipalities, the city of Oconomowoc came to our board, asked, didn't come to us, but they asked our Board of Directors to provide them our maintenance checklist for the retention ponds in our subdivision. Because in addition to this one, our HOA has, well, there's two bordering the cemetery, two small ones, and a larger one in the rear. So, let's see. They asked for our maintenance checklist for the retention ponds in our subdivision. They asked for the maintenance so the city could use it as a model for other retention ponds within neighborhoods in the city. Any runoff of above-ground contaminants, any underground leakage into that pond would require exceptional maintenance at an increased cost to all of our 113 families and the additional families residing in the condos. In addition to this, the tank location is, well, very near the city. Well, we've talked about that, and I understand you mentioned that it was within the required 1,000-foot, but as I was going through zoning today, I thought it was actually 1,200 feet. So I'm not sure which is correct, but we'll move on. Number four, access to Casey's via Sheldon and Lapham Streets. In addition to my previous comments on setbacks, Lapham Street is the only access road to our subdivision. Increasing vehicle traffic, heavy tanker traffic, and pedestrian traffic also increases the negative risks to our subdivision. Any major accident or fire would lock our families in or out of, where am I, our subdivision, depending on which side of the intersection you were on at the time of the incident. Our subdivision has enjoyed rapid real estate sales at high-end resale value. Building this gas station/convenience store on the only access road to our subdivision would indeed affect resale values in a negative way. We are told that Casey's has offered $100,000 to the city to be held in escrow for probably rebuilding Sheldon Avenue, but as the young lady stated, could be used for other improvements. Well, I would like to share with you that our board recently realized that in a previous issue, there is a access path that comes off of the road drive and is to the rear of the condos. Now, it's about a 16-foot-wide paved area, and it's my understanding the condo association wanted to build that into a road. In order to do that for that tiny little section, that's about a $50,000 quote. $100,000 to do the road is not even close. And if you think about it, a heavy fuel-filled tanker truck repeatedly driving in and out during winter months with the frost-a-thaw, frost-a-thaw, would tear the road up in no time at all. One more thing, rebuilding this road, Sheldon, to accommodate the heavy tanker would no doubt eliminate the off-street parking at the VFW. Now, taking away what may seem like nothing at all, actually is a deflating reality for the patrons of the VFW, veterans who have served to protect us. Conditional use permit, number five. I'm getting dry. It confuses me why this council would consider issuing a CUP to allow for the fuel operation when so many questions and issues regarding the logistics of this proposal have been resolved, have not been resolved. And I understand that you've postponed that for a while, and I appreciate that. However, conditional use permits are a powerful permit and deserve a certain amount of reverence and scrutiny before they are issued. It is my understanding that a conditional use permit runs with the land, meaning should Casey's pull out of this project with the CUP in place, any convenience store slash gas station business intending to build exactly the same footprint as Casey's could apply for the permits without question or public hearing. And just proceed building. Squeezing a business onto an oddly-shaped piece of land that is too small to accommodate the structure and surrounding hard surfaces should not be issued a CUP, but encouraged to reconsider locating a more suitable piece of land for their business, one in which the standard setbacks can be honored. And lastly, Oconomowoc City zoning ordinance, I would like to read to you just a few items listed under Section 17.002, Purpose and Intent. A, to promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. To maintain, B, to maintain and promote safe pedestrian and vehicular circulation. Number C, to protect environmentally sensitive areas, the retention pond. D, to preserve the natural scenic beauty of the city. And E, to stabilize and protect property values. In closing, these are only some of the items listed in this section of the zoning ordinance, yet these are the most applicable ones. I implore you to ask, how does this project fulfill these standards? Or does it? I believe I have submitted arguments to the contrary on each and every statement standard mentioned above. Please help our homeowners, their families, and the constituents in District One maintain current level of safety, health, welfare, and harmony we are all enjoying today, and reach for a new level of beautification within the eastern corridor of Oconomowoc. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your patience.
Thank you. I'd like, I would like to remind people, I would like to keep this to three minutes or less. There's a lot of people that want to talk, so we want to get everybody in. Bob Morgan?
Good evening. My name is Robert Morgan. I live in Forest Hill, in Line Wood, in Oconomowoc. First off, Casey's is a very well-run organization. They just opened their 2,000th store in Kentucky. The stock sells for about $125 to $129 a share. The price-to-earnage is not great. They pay their officers very well. Now, having said that, there's not- Now, having said that, there's nothing against Casey's. However, within the city of O'Conamok, there are three or four gas stations who are struggling and struggling hard. If you take away any percentage of business, you're going to drive into what we call erroneous competition. It would be to Casey's advantage and save them money if they bought up one of these struggling stations. Anytime you cut a small percentage of existing business sales, you're cutting a greater percentage of their profit. I think it's an obligation of the city, in the best interest of all concerned, including Casey's, to deny them and have them buy up one of the existing stations which are struggling, and you know they are. Therefore, Casey's, everything about it is wrong, and it's to Casey's advantage to buy up one of the existing and struggling stations. And having said that, thank you.
George Lingerman. Does anybody else that wishes to speak, please provide your cards. Just had him to Lou there in the end, and he can hand them up.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is George Lagerman. First of all, I want to stipulate that I have owned serviced gas stations and convenience stores, along with fresh-made pizzas, hamburgers made to order, fries, et cetera, et cetera. So I do know a little bit about what this is going down and going through planning conditions and things like this. Some of the things that Barb said are very important. One is the location of the tanks. Another thing that you guys got to look at is the ingress and regress of the road coming in off of Sheldon. If you look where the pumps are, the pumps are not located in a correct location. They should be turned, and they also be eliminated, let's say, down to eight instead of 12. Because if you really blow this up and do a real traffic, and the size of cars and trucks and things like that, you'll find that that's a very, very tight traffic flow. I went through that very similar situation, so I think I know what I'm talking about. The second thing is, I don't agree with the setbacks. I think it should maintain the 20 feet where it belongs, and because I don't think it's fair to the people whom own the property to the north. The other location is, it has to change too, is when they're coming off of Sheldon, which has already been stated, you know, the cost of doing a road, you're going to need at least six inches of asphalt if you're doing containers, or it's going to have to be concrete. So, $100,000 is not going to do it, guys. By the time you put curb gutters, sewer, and things like that, it's just not going to work. So that whole location has to change in the way you're coming in, because a tanker's going to come in off of Sheldon, he's going to come around in front of the store and go up to the tanks. And now, he's also now blocking the exit coming out, if he's backing in there, depending upon where they're having the fills at. So that's a crucial points to look at. The total architectural layout for fencing, six-foot fencing, along with some barrier trees and things like this, you really got to look at that, because six-foot isn't very high. I'm six-foot tall, and that should be higher to help and protect the people in the back. And if you're going to do a retention wall or fence, how far back is this thing going to go? Is it going to go all the way back to the retention pond and stop? Or is it just going to be across the back, I can't do it, just to the back part of the store? So that's important. State regulation, which was brought up by them, this is pretty well state-controlled in regards to how those pumps have to be put in the ground, all of the maintenance facilities have to be in there, the electronics to shut down, automatically, that's state requirement. So I don't have any problem with that, because they have to follow those rules and regulations. The other thing is, they didn't mention anything about diesel. I don't know if they're putting diesel in here or not. So then, they should also create a diesel island separate from the gas islands, because now you're talking trucks with trailers, especially contractors and things like that. And this whole site plan really has to be looked at, because you've got a terrific traffic problem. So, most of the other things that I was going to talk about, Barb already said, so I really thank you, okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Brian Lurch.
Yeah, I had a few things that I wanted to go over. So, I've lived in a similar small community as this and had a similar situation occur, and we had a similar type of business go in and kind of took our sleepy little hidden subdivision that this is and brought in people from outside of the community to work at the store, and we saw an increase in crime and a decrease in property value. It was very significant, and want to make sure that everybody is, takes that into consideration. If you look, that subdivision back there really is really unknown. I think people just drive past and don't even know that it's there. Putting the gas station right there at the beginning of the subdivision will really open up everybody's eyes to that road. I think, as people have said, people don't even know that road exists, because people just go right past that, that red light. So, I think it will highlight that there's homes back there, and with it being right at the edge of 16, if someone wanted to go in and commit a crime, they're very close to the highway to get away. The traffic, if you look there, the exit or the entrance is going to be on either Sheldon Road or Lapham Street. Now, Lapham Street only serves as an inlet and outlet to this small subdivision. It doesn't serve as any other way to get anywhere else in the community. So, it's a small road. It's not built, or the, and the people that live there are not used to having that kind of traffic. It doesn't really fit with that road there. And it is going to be very awkward, the way that the traffic pattern is set up, you would be going in and out of Sheldon or Lapham. I don't know why they don't go in and off of Wisconsin there. And again, to have the big tanker trucks right on, again, it's just a subdivision road The well protection was brought up, but I don't want to just gloss over that, just because, now, I don't know who or how the decision was made previously, but just because a decision was made that it was okay to be very close to the well on the west side of the road, doesn't mean that it's necessarily okay for it to be very close on the other side as well. You know, two wrongs don't always, two wrongs don't make a right. It doesn't mean that it's okay. It's a different set of ground, it's different, different underneath that ground there. So, I want to talk about the type of business. It's a gas station, the signage, it's very, you know, don't want to be offensive, but it's very, you know, Kmart dime store. It's not exactly upscale boutique, you know, do we want to have a Kmart, or do we want to have a Sendix? Do we want to have, you know, a nice entrance to the city, or do we want to have a, like I said, it's very dime store, the look, you know, it was, it was discussed previously. So, the home to the north, you know, there's very, I don't understand why there isn't more consideration for that homeowner. I mean, if I, if that was my property and there was going to be variance closer, you ten feet from my property, for, what, $100,000, I'd be pretty upset that the people weren't looking out for my best interests there. And it has been stated, $100,000 is very little to really get. I mean, it's going to be bringing in millions of dollars a year, and $100,000 is not that much to get excited about. I do want to mention that Jason Gallo and the other person that was bringing up the, talking it up to date, said that there would not be 24/7 operation. It says right there in the plan that while, yes, the plan is to start at 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, if business goes well, they propose that they could open 24/7. So I don't want people to not be aware that it does state that they could operate 24/7. I'm a little confused, we, last week, the vote was delayed because of the area overlay that was going to be voted on this week, and I guess I was looking to see what was worked out with the area overlay. It was mentioned that this whole thing could be kind of not an issue, depending on what the area overlay was voted on, so I'm hoping that that will be explained to us after this. I guess that's about it. Don't want to ramble on, but I really hope that people, our elected officials, listen to the constituents here. And we have a lot of people here, but I know that people try to be very accommodating. So just because every person doesn't come up and speak for as long as possible doesn't mean that they're not concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Beckman.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've been taking notes and crossing off to try to make sure I'm within the three minutes. So if I repeat, I apologize. I tried to cross everything off. So, I again concur with the majority of points that have been brought up from both Barb and other individuals. Few additional things that I did want to discuss, though, as a talking point specifically related to health and safety concerns. We've heard a lot of individuals talk about the concerns for safety with the increased traffic. I did note that the gentleman had indicated that he did not feel that there would be an increase to traffic with the building of a gas station. However, I'm going to disagree, because as you look at the plans, it may not be an increase to traffic on Wisconsin Avenue, but it will blatantly be an increase to traffic both on Sheldon and Lapham Street. I also wanted to discuss just a little bit regarding the gas fumes. I know we've talked frequently about the concerns with the runoff of gas and the fumes, et cetera. And in doing some research, there's been quite a bit of documentation regarding gas fumes and vehicle exhaust regarding or resulting in higher concentrations of benzene. Benzene is a known carcinogenic to humans and classified as a hazardous air pollutant. There's multiple studies available from the AMA, or American Medical Association, that note that this is an increased risk of childhood leukemia found within residential areas near gas stations, for which it's very evident that there's a nice-sized subdivision of middle-class filled with a lot of children. The gentleman prior to me also commented regarding the type of business. Last week at the planning meeting, one of the individuals had commented that if we were to rule this out, that something will go there. And I, I know I've spoken to many individuals in our community, and we're not opposed to the development of the land. I think the more our opposition is opposed to the type of development that's being proposed. There's grave concerns to the idea of having the light pollution there, despite putting up a six-foot fence, if you look at the neighborhood, the neighborhood goes up on a hill. There's really no way outside of planting 40-foot trees to potentially avoid the increased light that would take place, as well as the noise. Other things, I crossed up a very large section here. Aesthetic concerns that even with all of the best landscaping, adding additional gas station will diminish in the aesthetic of the community. Casey's, unfortunately, and I again have no disregard to Casey's, I've been there at multiple places throughout Illinois, but it's not known as its presence as an upscale community. It's not usually seen as a gateway to a community that sees itself as up and coming. Per the plans, they're indicating that the building's slated to be 4,517 square feet on 1.26 acres. I also had to concur with the gentleman earlier, I'm not quite certain, no matter how many times I've paced that lot, I'm not quite certain how that's going to work with the traffic flow and would have concerns with that as well. And then finally, the other concern that I wanted to raise is just the value and property value for our communities, as I'm sure it's kind of the unspoken concern with many individuals as well in our community. When you're looking at, and I've talked to individuals recently with Shore West, with Realtors in multiple different areas, and they said that there is significant evidence that property values decrease at about 7% to 25% when you add in a gas station into that area, which is clearly a significant concern for myself as a homeowner in that community. And I believe that's all my points. So thank you very much.
Paul Bealick.
Thank you very much. I am the owner of the land that we're speaking of right now, and I guess what I have to say is I have an appreciation for everyone's concern in the community. But if you look at it realistically, every single solitary one of these businesses along Wisconsin Avenue would be subject to the same thing that they're saying tonight about Casey's. If you went back to day one, no one wanted anything in their community. They all have basically the same objections, you know, they don't want light pollution, they don't want traffic, they don't want noise. Well, no one really wants that, but people choose to live in a city. They choose to live in a metropolitan area. If they don't want those type of things, they ought to be living out on a farm. This is then zone commercial. You and the city have given many, many vending businesses, variances, and approvals to do things outside of the code, and I guess I'm asking just to be treated fairly like all the other businesses in town. So, I appreciate everybody's concern, but this is Wisconsin Avenue, and this is a commercial lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Eric Ludwig.
My name is Eric Ludwig. I'm a resident 195 North Lapham, so I am the fourth house up on the right as you take Lapham in. Again, want to echo a lot of the sentiments here already brought forward. I was here in opposition as well last week during the Plan Commission meeting. Traffic and sidewalk, safety cannot be reiterated enough. I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old, so riding a bike, anything, definitely a huge concern. Not only is it a concern from Lapham on to Wisconsin, but also the number of cars that use Lapham as a turnaround, whether it's Minard's truck, whether it's a commercial vehicle, whether it's a delivery truck for our neighborhood or not, they use our P-shaped neighborhood to conveniently turn around and then come back to go where they need because they missed something. The setback is definitely a concern for that homeowner and homeowners. Again, we're up a little bit, but again, that is pretty unsightly. Sheldon Road, we're looking for money, but yet, in the comments from the city planner, there is no plan for Sheldon Road at this time. So we're taking money for something, we don't know what we're going to spend it on. Again, 100, 200,000 dollars, whatever they're offering, definitely not chump change, but at the same time, there's no plan for it, so why are we worrying about that? This is a unique lot, so the gentleman just voiced some concerns. Again, a lot of different places get variances based upon their business. You have a unique lot in a unique location that has a lot of concerns. You need to take that into account, and just because one person came up and said, hey, let's do this, doesn't mean it is the right thing. The Casey's people also pointed out that this is more than a gas station, so not only do we have traffic for gas, we have traffic for store, for food. We also have delivery drivers now. So you have at least three or four employees parking there. You have delivery drivers coming in and out, and then you somehow are going to try and fit 12 pumps with those number of parking stalls there as well. And if anybody has been to a gas station with parking immediately in front of a building with that amount of spacing between, I honestly don't have words for that. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terry? Couldn't quite make out the last name.
It's Mazra. That's okay.
Okay.
And I live in 290 Thorough, which I'm in the subdivision up above Casey's too. I just wanted to reiterate some of the concerns, especially on the driving. If everybody comes through there around 5:00 o'clock... If everybody comes through there around five o'clock at night, you already know that a lot of people are using that right hand lane to the very last second until they can get over on the left. And they're trying to race through town and beat other people to get ahead. I think that's just gonna be exacerbated with this problem with people trying to get in and out there. And then the other point, I kind of agree with the one individual. Casey's is a publicly traded company. Where they're locating is, is going to be very good for them. It's, it's gonna be sucking a lot of that traffic as it's coming into town from the east, but denying that to the two independent gas stations that are further down the road. So those are basically, and then the last point I want to make is kind of the noise. I live up there. I can already hear, you know, at midnight, if there's a loud, you know, if there's a truck stepping on its accelerator down on Wisconsin Avenue, you can hear it up in the house, you know? Especially even now in the winter, if it's a, a larger dump truck or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to regular business. First item is approval of minutes from the meeting of December fifth, two thousand seventeen. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move.
Second.
Seconded. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. Next item is comments and suggestions from citizens. This would be on any other subject that you may have. If you have anything that you'd like to say on any other subject besides what we just talked about, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is rather lengthy. I'm gonna read off what's on it, and if anybody wants to pull anything off of it, please say so, and then we'll pull it off and discuss it independently. On the consent agenda tonight, we have licenses. We have an electric utility easement between the City of Economowoc and Armour Road LLC. We have intergovernmental service agreement between the City of Economowoc and Town of Economowoc for dispatch services. We have budget amendments for grants received and true up for expenses from October first through December thirty first of two thousand seventeen. We have a letter of credit release for Pine Ridge Estates LLC. We have another letter of credit release for Pine Ridge Three Subdivision. We have a letter of credit release for the retreat at Prairie Creek. We have a resolution adding and combining wards for elections. This is more of a procedural issue. We have a resolution to change the polling place for Aldermanic District Two to the Community Center. We are going to set the trick or treat hours for this coming October, for Saturday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, from six to eight PM. We also have the treasures report. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Lou, did you want to pull that one item out?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, why don't you state what you want to do?
I'd, I'd like to pull off item aye, the resolution to change polling place for Aldermanic District Two for discussion.
Okay, for separate discussion.
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna be working on the consent agenda, less item aye. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Okay, back to item aye, a resolution changing the polling place for Aldermanic District Two from the fire station to the Community Center. You want to discuss it?
Yes, I, I would. The, the location that we're, we're proposing to change to, which is the Community Center, has been notified to, to the public for a couple of months. I, I'm not opposed to the location. However, this year specifically, we have construction of two large scale projects and immediately adjacent to the Community Center. And for that reason, I had, had some discussion about how to handle the traffic associated with that, specifically to accommodate for the elderly that may want to park in the, in the front of the Community Center as opposed to the parking lot for short term to accommodate for access. I think in discussion with Diane, potentially we could accommodate for additional manpower to, to, to help with that. But I, I think it, there is, there is some concern that I have for safety associated with the increased traffic, both on foot and car. In the Community Center this year with Park on LaBelle and Eagles Landing under heavy construction. So that's, that's why I wanted to pull it off, is to at least make the public aware that the city potentially will make some efforts, some additional efforts to ensure safety and traffic is not an issue during the times that they'll be coming in for voting. I'm not opposed to, to the change. I, I understand and know it to be ultimately better for the community, but this year, we have some specific challenges that I think would have been, would have been good to, to communicate earlier. But when we initially started sending out notifications, Park on LaBelle wasn't approved. So that, that wasn't necessarily something to, to put forward. So for that reason, I am in support of it, but want to have that discussion.
Is, is, I mean, we're changing from the fire station to Community Center?
That's correct.
And for the reason, the fact that we don't own the fire station anymore, is that the reason?
That is definitely one of the reasons. Another reason is that they made improvements to the fire station and the room we were using now houses an office for one of the fire lieutenants. So the area we had shrunk and also trying to conduct voting in the bay where they keep all their equipment and the vehicles is also difficult to do, especially if they get an emergency call. So it was always the intention to go back to the Community Center once the Community Center was built and parking was finalized, you know, stalls were built, the parking was paved. And that has occurred. And when we started this discussion, actually last year, probably spring to summer, the construction of, with Park on Lake LaBelle was not an issue, if you will. It wasn't even an approved project. So it is something we will have to look at for that voting day, which is February twentieth, there is a primary, and potentially April third for the spring election. So we will have to see, as I talk to Alderman Kavieski about, I'd have to talk with Sarah and you, Mayor, about looking at ways to potentially get some volunteers or do something to help with traffic or with people crossing streets, things like that. I don't even know at what stage construction will be on that particular day, like what type of equipment will be out there and things like that.
Right, I think some of the, the important part will be the parking, which is across the street, to, to monitor that for the crosswalks to make sure that those people are, you know, safe crossing the street, because that's basically where everybody's gonna park and cross. So I don't think we can change from where it is gonna be. We're just gonna have to make sure that we, I don't know if you have a squad car parked there, or if you have some sort of a yield sign up to make sure that people know that when people are in a crosswalks, they can't. I've seen that in other communities, and we have it too, you know, where you, you know, make sure that people stop when people are in crosswalks so they notice it. Alderman Shaw?
Mayor, would it, would there be any consideration to close that street down that day and detour around it? That way you could go from the parking lot across Wisconsin Avenue with no traffic.
Yeah, but that's, you're talking for twelve hours.
Yeah, you are. For the entire time the voting's open.
I don't know if that's a...
I, that's, I'm just asking.
I know. I, I don't know if that's, that's the best solution either. I think people just have to be aware of what's going on and make sure that there, there's a presence there and that people know that people are crossing the street and it's a crosswalk. Alderman Stray?
Oh, there, there already is, you know, two crosswalks there with a blinking light that's, that's state law. So we gotta get somebody who's out of the Community Center, because that's what it was built there for, is to accommodate the, the voting and the nine people that get their lunch there all the time of the day.
Alderman Schmidt?
It was my understanding when that parking lot was created that during the day, it was, that area was the banks.
Not that area right next to the Community Center, if you go east of there.
Okay, so we could have...
That area right there by the, by the Worthington, right across the street from the Community Center, that's city parking lot.
Okay. And I guess one of the questions that I had, you know, why was, is the rec center a better option than the library?
Because library is used for the fourth district.
We're already voting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in an odd spot for the fourth.
Good reason, thank you.
And that's, and that's been there for...
Double up.
As long as I have lived there, it's always been there. At the high school, the first district's at Greenland School.
Okay.
So Charlie?
Yeah, that was, fourth district, people vote actually in a facility that's in the second.
In the second. We talked about this a couple of times before, yeah.
I forgot about that. I, up by us, it's the school.
Sarah?
Mayor, this is, if you, staff can talk about this and work through alternatives to try to address the concern and what...
It's just basically to monitor the safety and make sure that we have, we don't have issues, so. We will need a motion to approve this though, since that was pulled out.
I move to adopt the resolution, changing the location of the district number two polling place to two twenty West Wisconsin Avenue.
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? You okay with it? Okay. Take the roll, please.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zwort.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye. Okay, moving on to old business, first item is consider acting ordinance to repeal and recreate, and recreate section seventeen point two oh eight of the zoning code relating to the downtown design overlay district, design standards. This is for the second reading. Need a motion to approve the second reading now. Before we, we make that motion, well, let's make the motion first and then I'll go from there.
I'll make that one. Second.
Okay. Amendment to the plan last, the last time we voted, and we changed the setback on Wisconsin Avenue from Fowler Street all the way up through the end from five feet to ten feet. And is it fifteen feet in that far east section? Thought it was ten feet all the way.
No, it is, along Wisconsin Avenue, it is from the roundabout. It is ten feet all the way to Lapham and it is fifteen feet, I believe. Let me just double check. From Lapham to the bypass on the north side of the road.
Wasn't the original five feet?
Right. During the December nineteenth meeting, the council directed staff to change the blue area, I'll call it, for ease on the north side of Wisconsin from five feet to ten feet.
Okay.
And, and that change has been incorporated on the maps and in the ordinance as well.
Okay, and then the eastern part, was that always fifteen feet? That wasn't always fifteen feet, was it?
It's twenty. Yeah, yes, it was.
That was always fifteen?
The red was, right?
In the red area, yeah.
Okay. The way I look at it, I think we, by changing it from, from five to ten, we are taking, this is a business district and the way it's set up, it was a five to three vote. And I would propose a compromise and to change that back to five feet, but to change, to leave the setback on Fowler Street at ten feet, that was also five feet at one point. And I can see Fowler Street being ten feet because that is more of a residential area. But Wisconsin Avenue being the main corridor as you come into town, I think should remain at five feet. So I would like to propose that as a, a compromise. Let's see where we go from there.
Can you, can you show us on the map where exactly you're talking this to go from?
The blue section, Wisconsin Avenue. Setback from Fowler Street all the way to Lapham. It's ten feet now. This is where we discussed last time, were the amendment to change it?
Okay.
We changed it from five feet to ten feet. I'd like to change that back to five feet. Because that is a business district. And I feel that it's important to, for those businesses to have the ability to utilize their property as much as they can. Fowler Street I'm okay with.
Have a question for Jason.
Go ahead.
What's, do you know what the closest building to the road is and how far it is right now on that, on the whole corridor?
The...
To the right of way, not to the road, I'm sorry.
Right, the, probably the Fresh and Green building is, is fairly close. Tim's Auto is, is fairly close.
How close would you say those are?
You know, I didn't, I didn't measure them.
Fifteen feet-ish?
Ten to fifteen feet in that range.
So what we're proposing is bringing buildings closer to the road than those buildings?
Future.
Future buildings.
Future.
If that's what we want, then that's, if that's what you want, that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not necessarily in favor of getting things closer.
It, it is a business district. It is, it is a business, a commercial district. It is business and it's, it would give us better utilization of the property. We still have the, the lake front, the lake behind it, so we have to have the setbacks there. So we have to allow the, the business owners and the property owners to utilize the space correctly. Lou?
I can appreciate the, the thought behind that, but I, I like the ten foot because it, it provides more, almost more of a boulevard type feel with that extra space as an entrance point into the city. Is, I, I, I like that, that kind of feel. If this was someplace else, I'd, I'd be all on board on that five and I, but I think the ten is, is, is uniform and it provides that additional width to not feel closed in as you're coming into the city and to the downtown district. Just a thought, my thoughts.
Matt? Yeah, I was opposed to moving this to ten feet before. Jason, can you tell me what it was before we made the amendment? Well, it was five at one point. We amended it to ten. What is it right now before we do this overlay? What's it at right now?
It's zero.
Zero, right? So we, we already are creating the space. And I, Lou, the one, my one comment to your comment would be, it's not really uniform because on the other side of the street, we left at five feet. And then when you, when you look from the little corner there by George Webb's, there's nobody across the street on the other side. So it already kind of has that boulevard feel on that side. You've already got the trees, you know? So my concern with keeping it at ten, which is why I opposed it before, was you do have some very narrow property owners here and you're taking away that developable space. I mean, we want to encourage people, this is an area, we're doing this so that we can encourage people to develop it, so we can encourage people to do something. And look, I mean, if they come into it, they could always ask for a variance, I suppose, anyway. But, but why, why should we discourage them from looking at a property in, in the first place? So I, I'm for moving it back to five and I would make that amendment once we're done with discussion.
Any other comments? Jeff?
I guess I can even maybe see it from Thompson Street to the west, reducing it back. But although there are some narrow properties, those are all very deep properties, even though they do kind of go off into some low land as you get closer to the lake, but they still are deeper.
Hang on. There is a motion to amend?
Oh, I said no. I said I'd make that motion to amend once we're done with discussion. Yeah. That's okay, thanks.
So based on the, based on the depth of those properties, I, I think you could very easily utilize that additional space out in front and it would have a bigger impact. I, I just look at the apartment building by the roundabout and realize that even that as a, as a larger, taller building is fairly imposing as you come down the street. And there is, you know, there's, there's ten feet of grass between the sidewalk, or more than ten feet of grass in most places, between the sidewalk and the building there. So, you know, you're really saying that even though we'll have step backs on the buildings and some of the architectural things, we still could have some fairly imposing buildings that would even be closer to the sidewalks and closer to the roads down there than, than that building is. And, and that's not something that I want to see us do.
I think something we're looking for here though is we want to have, because these, these, this area would all, they would have to include parking and after that, do we want to have parking in front or do we want to have parking behind the buildings? And that's why I think it's important to have the buildings up front where the, the, where that is and have the parking behind so that you don't have basically what we have now. And that's what we're trying to move away from, is to make the entrance into the city more accommodated and more welcoming. And by seeing parking lots, it doesn't really make it accommodating. So I'm thinking if we move the buildings closer to the street than the parking behind it, it makes everything look much better. And that, that's, that's my thought there on that whole entrance into downtown. On the far east end, which is more of a, there's a lot of established places there already, so it's not going to change a whole lot. This whole other area, though, where there's a lot of older buildings and a lot of things that are good for potential redevelopment, I think makes sense to have it so that the parking's in the back and the businesses are up in the front.
I think that's an excellent point. I think that's the best reason to do it, is you, you for, if you, if you start with the ten feet, they're going to put the buildings further back and they're going to put the parking in front, which is exactly the opposite of what we want.
Which is what we don't want.
You know, the Laurelburgs kind of look, you know, that was done, you know, forty, fifty years ago, whatever. That's the look you don't want. You want the building to be a little closer, have those architectural features, have the plantings and the landscaping and have the parking behind. The setback, though, is from the, still set from the right of way. It's not from the road, is it? Or is that from the road?
It's from the right of way, which is generally the edge of the sidewalk.
So you're still, you know, you've got the grass, you've got some sidewalk, and then you've got more, another five feet beyond that. So it's going to be probably double still what we're looking at at gateway for, for space. And right now, we're at zero, so I think we're doing a lot of improvement.
I think, I think it's a good compromise.
Well, I think that's part of my problem down there is the fact that sidewalk is up against, pretty much up against the curb down.
Well, in certain areas.
That's because they have a zero setback, though, at the gateway. They, they put that in with the zero setback.
I'm talking about on East Wisconsin Avenue. As you go down there, there's, there's very, very little boulevard there, or terrace area. It, it is very narrow and that's why I do have that concern. And I agree with the mayor. I, I mean, I really, really do want to see the, the parking behind buildings, but again, when you look at the depth of those lots, they are very deep. And, and the, the compromise that I think we made when we were talking about the zoning was that, was on the height and having certain step backs. And I think that the key here is going to be the type of building that goes on the lot, but it's because they are narrower, they're going to be, some of those are going to be taller. So, yeah, again, I don't, I don't think that it's, nobody's going to put a bigger building back towards the back of the lot where you do have a little bit more of a water table issue, et cetera. The buildings are still going to be out near the front.
Tom, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I agree on that Thompson Street, you know, ten foot in there, because to me, that, that's going to be an area for something kind of tall to go in that area up there. I don't want to just look at there.
You can't really look at the streets there because, you know, chances are someone from Fowler Street over, you know, Thompson Street, how long is that going to be there? I know we're going to utilize it hopefully as a, you know, for our purposes, but the front, I'm not sure, you know? I, I think though, the, you know, first we have to have the amendment if that's introduced, then we can debate that part of it. But I think the, the five foot, I would like to see the five foot. In fact, I have not done this and I have not seen it done before, but if it stays the way it is, I will veto this ordinance. It means, means it goes back to the way it was. Because you can't just, you, you take it all for one, right? Is that the way it goes?
Well, I'm writing a veto right now.
Write, write it down.
What will happen is if he vetoes that, it will come back to you at the next meeting and then you can override his veto by a two thirds vote.
Which is six, right?
You got eight, that's six.
Six.
Unless somebody doesn't show up, right? No.
That happens sometimes. Got to have a quorum, though.
You can't override it. But I, I feel strongly enough on this that I think it should be five feet because we want to look at redeveloping or have the possibility to redevelop that area. And I think if we, if we limit it too much, if we limit it to ten feet, you're going to have potential developers bypass it and I don't want to see that.
I support you a hundred percent. I think that's the best way to do it. And I do like the idea of keeping Fowler the ten feet.
Yeah.
I think that's the most practical way of doing it.
Well, I'll make the amendment then, so we can discuss the amendment, changing the ten foot setback along East Wisconsin from the, the roundabout to Lapham back to five feet, which is what it was in the original plan.
Second.
And also leaving Fowler Street at ten?
Yeah, my amendment is just the amendment to that because I think the other one stays the way it is. We're not changing it.
Right. Well, we, I think we changed, didn't we change? Last time we changed?
There was a motion and it was amended to, to change Fowler Street.
Ten.
On the one, on the one I'm looking, on the one I'm looking at, it says ten on it right now.
Leave that the way it is.
Yeah, leave that the way it is. Yeah, I mean, if I could just speak to my motion, I think for everything we've already discussed, it's, it's good to keep it at five. It stays consistent then along that whole stretch of East Wisconsin. And then, you know, you've got nobody on the other side. You've just got the trees and the road. And, you know, we're, we're already doing better than what we've got now and still trying to understand what those property owners are dealing with, with their property sizes. I think that's important. And I think it makes sense to try to, when people start looking at properties to develop, and I'm not a developer, so I don't know a hundred percent, but, you know, they start looking at these things. They look at the setbacks, they look at those things to figure out, you know, what can I put here? What would make sense economically for me to do? And the more and more restrictions we put on it, even if it's five feet here, ten feet there, starts changing what they're willing to do. And then they go, they just go somewhere else. And I, I think we don't want that to happen. And, you know, look, this has done so much with regard to what buildings are going to go there in the future architecturally, structurally, and the look of everything. I think thirty, forty years from now, people are going to be really happy with what we did, especially if it starts getting more and more developed.
Lou?
I think regardless of whether it's a, a five or ten, and I believe it's probably going to go to the five, but what we're doing here with the overlay is going to encourage development that is good for the community to occur in this area, which is needed.
It's work for downtown. I mean, it's already working for downtown, the work we did.
I've, I've talked to developers as, as late as, as this morning in regards to this area and what we're doing, and, and they're excited to see what we're doing.
Jeff?
It just seems odd to me, though, that we're saying that on a street like Thompson Street, it's going to be seven feet setback from the sidewalk on an area where it's not a through street, it's not a heavily traveled street, and yet we're going to require more of a setback over there than we're going to require out on Wisconsin Avenue. And I, with the exception of hearing from one person that is a property owner on East Wisconsin Avenue, I have not heard from any property owners nor any area developers that have come in and said, this is too restrictive or it's going to limit the use of my property. I've not heard that from anybody. And again, just for the reasons I've already stated, veto or not, I still will not vote to change it back to five.
Eric?
I guess the biggest problem I have is the lack of terrace area for people riding their bikes, kids walking, whatever. They're right on, they're right next to traffic there. And I wish there was some way we could put a terrace area in there. I think maybe we could do something like let, let people put the sidewalk as part of their setback area. I guess what I'm saying is the right of way is, is too close to the road there. And it would be nice if there was some relief from the sidewalk when things were redeveloped. If there's a way that we could get people to use that setback as the, as the sidewalk area on their property rather than the right of way so that we have a better walkway down that corridor. That's the part that really is goofy in that corridor. And if we could somehow fix that with our ordinance to allow for a terrace when it's redeveloped and the sidewalk being on their property in the setback area, that would be ideal. Do you understand where I'm coming from? Because that's the real bad part about that whole stretch for pedestrian traffic is that little ki, I don't, I never liked my kids riding on that road when they were, when they wanted to go to McDonald's. I was always afraid until they pretty much got their license. So I don't know if there's a way to do it, but that's really my problem with that area more than anything.
Yeah, and, and that's been like that since forever.
I'm asking if there's a way we can fix it with letting them have a sidewalk in their setback area and having a terrace.
And I'm saying that was like that when there were thriving businesses on that end of town. AMP was there. There was all sorts of businesses there and it's always been that way.
Doesn't mean it's right.
No, I know, but it's, 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 it's how it was designed.
Change is good.
Walkability in a community is a, a, a big draw as well. And this is the only side of Wisconsin along this stretch that has sidewalk. So take that into consideration as we're setting, discussing the setbacks. And I think Derek's comment would be a, a nice accommodation to move it forward.
Is that something that you think we need to add into?
Do you have?
The ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to add that into the ordinance or is that something that we could just do?
Jason, you have any pictures of that area available?
Not, not available, no.
What they're talking about is that the sidewalk goes right to the curb. There's no terrace in between. Like you would see on West Wisconsin Avenue where there's a.
Condom some land, put a sidewalk.
The setback doesn't change it, though. It's not going to change where the sidewalk is anyway. People aren't going to rip it all up and move the sidewalk anyway.
I'm saying when it redevelops.
I see.
Let them put sidewalk in their setback area and then put grass. Just as it redevelops, it might be a little.
And I'm, and I'm okay with that because it does make it more walkable. Like people said, it's more.
It would be better for them.
Pedestrian friendly.
Right.
So you.
It gets the pedestrians closer to their businesses if it were a business.
Most areas have how much of a terrace area? I mean, like West Wisconsin Avenue is like a three foot terrace area?
We're going to have sidewalk here, then you got to go over here, sidewalk here, then up here is the sidewalk here.
During different phases of redevelopment, yeah.
If you want to get it fixed all at once, figure out how much right of way you have and move your sidewalk to the northernmost portion of your right of way.
And that's not going to work for most businesses.
And it's going to be expensive for us, right?
It'll be really expensive.
Again, we're talking about future development, so that's what we're looking to encourage and, and move forward in a, in a uniform way that's the, not just better for the community, but the best for the community, I think, which is what you're, what you're striving for.
Right.
I totally get that and respect that. And I, I think adding something like Derek mentioned and becoming that walkab-, enhancing the walkability and, and dealing with bikes and whatever goes there in the future, and again, we're not talking about what's there now, I think is beneficial.
Do you got some pictures, Joe?
Yeah. There's a terrace. I brought the block Chacony GIS up.
Okay.
And there's grass along the whole stretch. Looks to be about four feet wide to the sidewalk from the curb.
Can you bring that up?
Yeah.
I mean, can you?
If you can get on the internet on here, you could bring it up.
Some spots are, some spots are narrow, though, too. There's a little bit of both.
Well, it just may be because the sidewalk is, is, was made wider, but that doesn't mean whatever's on the GIS system. What, Jeff?
I guess, you know, when we look at our downtown, one of the comments we get is, you know, the lighted trees and the fact that we do have a lot of plantings and stuff along our downtown area. And we don't have that on East Wisconsin Avenue. So at the same time as we're saying, you know, we can reduce this area down, these same developments have to have X number of landscaping points. And so what we're really saying is in order to meet your landscaping points, you don't have to have any room out front and there's not going to be much room to plant anything other than a few bushes, but your trees and all your rest of the landscaping points will be behind the buildings where it doesn't get seen. And I, I don't want to see that. I want to see a little bit more landscaping along East Wisconsin Avenue to whatever degree we can, knowing it's not going to be like the downtown area.
I'm wrong then. All that discussion was for nothing.
That, that's, that, that happened haphazardly. It wasn't due to any, any direction or guidance.
It might have happened, actually, after they rebuilt it. Never mind.
Hang on. Let's bring it up here. Okay, as you can see, there is a pedestrian. There is sidewalk all along.
It seems small because it's so, the traffic moves fast along.
Well, in some areas, too, it's not.
And there's no trees either.
Well, in some areas, too, it's not grass.
We even allow trees in there? That's true.
Some areas, it's pavement. So.
At the Mueller Square, there, there's very, the pavement comes right up to the sidewalk there. But then as you get, you know, as you go eastward here, there, there's grass. This is the Century Site, and then this is the Fresh and Green I mentioned earlier. That's one of the closest buildings. And then as you head out to this area where Radkey is, they're, they're pretty much right up to the sidewalk, but there would be a setback.
And there are trees there, too.
And this is because right now it's at zero, so they can go right up to the sidewalk. And we're, we're going to push them another five feet back.
So by doing what we want to do, we're, we're leaving the sidewalk where it is, we're putting the buildings near the front and everything else in the back. So we have a motion and.
Joe's just the closeness of the.
Well, you have the car dealership there, of course.
They're in the right of way. Get them out of there. It's the angle, I know.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we have amendment on the, on the floor to change the setback on Wisconsin Avenue back to five feet, but leave everything else the way it is. Go ahead, Kevin.
Back to five feet? I thought it was zero.
No, it's at ten. And the way we passed it last time or the first reading, it was ten feet.
Right.
It was amended from five to ten.
Okay.
It's currently zero in the.
It's currently zero and with.
We're going to make it five. So we have a motion, second on the floor. Call the role, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
No.
Alderman Zwart?
No.
Alderman Stray?
No.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
It's a tie vote, mayor.
And I vote aye. So it's amended to five feet and ten feet on the side streets, or on the side on Fowler. So now we have an amended ordinance for the second reading. Do we have any other discussion? See, Charlie?
I do. I have a question that the gentleman brought up concerning the public hearing tonight about the rear yard setback and what this overlay did for building in the rear yard setback. This, this ordinance does nothing to change any of that in the site where Casey's is proposed. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we have a, the rear yard of Casey's is not, the setback is not being altered with this ordinance. You can see on, on the thing, the property line is, is right in here and there's, there's no setback shown. So it would.
It will continue to be a twenty foot setback.
Right.
Okay.
It says fifteen.
No, that's, that's side yard.
That's only to the right of way.
That's to the right of way on the street, not between the, between the property.
Not the rear property line. Because I thought that's what the plan commission was waiting, why they postponed this was because the overlay might change something having to do with.
Well, I wasn't sure what the vote was going to be or how this was going to be affected, so.
There is side yard offsets regarding five feet, and that is new, but the five feet is within the ten feet that's being proposed for Casey's. So that is okay. I mean, if we determine that as a side yard or something, one of these lot lines up there would have to probably be a, a side yard. So it would, would be, you know, but that is within the, the ten feet that they are proposing.
Say that again.
Probably.
There's rear, there's rear setbacks and side setbacks. So the rear setbacks are different than the side yard setbacks in these areas, right?
We're really not creating a rear yard setback with this. The, the rear yard is staying the same. We're creating a front yard setback and a side yard setback. We currently, the side yard is zero and we're making a, a five foot, so then the buildings aren't right up to each other. And there's a, so there's no rear yard setback with this. So the setback for Casey's would, would be twenty feet.
Okay, so that's still there. So whatever they have proposed still isn't, they still need this, the PD.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a amended motion. It's been, we have a motion in the second. Do you have any other discussion? Seeing none, call the role.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart.
Aye.
Alderman Stray.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Shaw.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, discussion act on results of facility analysis for six thirty East Wisconsin Avenue. Who's gonna discuss, Mark or Chief?
I can speak to it.
You're gonna speak to it?
Yep. Um, the, the city council had, um, made a, directed to proceed with an offer to purchase for the six thirty East Wisconsin Avenue property for two million fifty thousand dollars, um, with the contingency of completing a structural analysis of the site to ensure that the building shell could be utilized and would, um, for our intended use of the police facility. So we had, um, the structural analysis done, um, various contractors came in, we received the report back, which is in your packet. Um, and as you will see that there was, um, they stated that overall the building shell is in good condition and that no major repairs are anticipated. The items that they did, um, um, talk about in the report are things that, um, we, we were, um, would be covered with estimates of what it would cost to, um, remodel the building to, to make it for our use. So with that, um, we feel that with the council's direction previously that you could release the contingencies of the offer to purchase and we could proceed with closing.
Any discussion, Adams?
That would be the contingencies related to the property condition, not the, you know, all of the other contingencies relating to whatever we get on title.
Thank you.
I'm still not really excited about this, um, with this approach, and in the, in the reports back, they weren't able to, to really take a look at the roof because of the winter conditions. We don't know what that roof structure is like. And really, what we could end up with is, is four walls that identify a building that is too, that is bigger than what is required for our twenty-five year plan for the police station. I would, I would propose that if we do move forward with this site, um, that we take a look at a, a different direction and perhaps take a look at, um, removing that structure and creating a new structure appropriately sized for the police department along Wisconsin Avenue, and then taking that back lot along the lake and, um, allowing that to be developed by private development. That cost then could, uh, help offset the acquisition costs of the property as a whole, um, benefiting the community, uh, both from the private development and minimizing the cost of acquisition. I, I think, uh, depending on what we, and how we discuss, uh, that would probably be the, the best way to utilize that site if that site proceeds.
Mark?
I'd just like to address the item that Alderman Kowieski raised regarding the roof. Uh, yeah, they, they didn't do any major investigation on it because of the, uh, snow that was up there. But the one thing that they did note is that, or at least in their discussion, is that the roof has passed its useful life. So one of the things that, um, as the city administrator noted, that, uh, included in some of the cost estimates regarding that building was for the replacement of the roof. So that's been planned for all along.
Uh, replacement of the, of the roof membrane and replacement of the, of the roof structure are, are different.
Yeah, they, they had no concerns with the roof structure, but that the roof membrane there, as noted in the report, there is a small leak up in there right now, and obviously that would be handled, so. You know, there could be, once they peel back the membrane, uh, maybe some insulation needs to be replaced, but, you know, that's the one thing that we wouldn't know, but they did, uh, throw out a number of, uh, what it would potentially cost for replacing that roof, and it was, uh, um, you know, it was a hundred and fourteen thousand, I think there's a hundred and thirteen in the numbers that we were looking at for the building, so it's, it's right there.
It's already been incorporated into the cost.
Yes. To, to further, uh, discuss the idea that I put forward, I, I have had some, uh, discussion with, with people that develop that type of, uh, area. And if, if we did proceed with demoing the building and, and, and doing new build closer to Wisconsin Avenue, that, that really positions that police station, um, in a more visible area. We can accommodate for parking, um, to the north and still leave enough, uh, acreage for development and cleaning up that lake frontage for community good. And the cost differential between that could put us to a po- a net positive of a half a million plus. So there, there is some validity from not only a utilization, but a, a, a dollar, uh, in cost figure associated with taking a look at that and exploring that.
Okay.
Charlie?
Well, I just have some concerns that we're discussing now about raising this building when we just had it inspected, and why did we bother paying for an inspection?
I wasn't for it.
I think this just came up.
I don't know why you did it.
I think this just came up, some of that stuff, I think, I'm, I'm not sure, but that back, that back lot, that lake is a mess, so.
Well, I don't even think the D N R lets you go in there. To tell you the truth, they're not gonna let you start dredging that stuff out of the lake.
So my understanding is, Mark, the, your, your, your discussion with Walk Shaw Roofing is that this roof is probably beyond its useful life. Do we know what it costs to repair this type of, um, ballasted E P D M roofing? I mean, the whole thing has to be ripped out, redone, right?
He just said one fourteen.
One fourteen.
Hundred fourteen grand? Oh, I'm sorry.
And we already budgeted a hundred and thirteen for.
Hundred, hundred thousand in the estimate for the reconfiguration, and, and we just got a rough estimate of a hundred and fourteen thousand, so it's right in that.
When did we, but we budgeted for that as part of this process?
No, no, they.
It's part of the police department.
Oh.
Construction.
I see. Out of the ten million?
Yeah.
So putting on my lawyer hat, um, not as legal counsel for the city, of course, but as my professional job, I read James Jan Dusa's report in the, on the last page of his report, and I note that there's no page numbers on this thing anywhere.
It was extra.
Professional engineer James Jan Dusa says, "In general, the building is in good struc- structural condition with no repair, major repair work needed." And then I looked through his report and I see nothing but repair work noted throughout the report. I see step cracks, I see subsequent settling at the corners, tuck pointing all cracks around the perimeter, repainting the exterior. I see area roof along where there's mold, mold remediation will need to be redone, the roof repaired and drywall removed. I see controlled joints with issues and vertical cracks, I see tuck points, all cracks in the masonry. His opinion is that moisture has entered the walls through cracks seen from the exterior causing dampness in the blocks. He claims the effervescence is not an issue, but that we'll have to clean and paint all those blocks if left exposed. And also, the surface of the floor slab in the building appears to be damaged due to freeze thaw conditions. It should be anticipated that the floor will need to be ground and filled to provide a consistent surface for new flooring. So with all those repairs, although apparently Mr. Jan Dusa does not believe that they're severe, um, do we have any estimates for all the work that Jan Dusa indicated we needed done?
In, in looking through the report and then looking through the estimate that we had, uh, for, for the structure and, and the work that would take place inside, uh, it did include cleaning of the block and painting of it. Uh, it did include caulking, uh, it did include wall prep, which they didn't specifically, you know, talk tuck pointing, tuck pointing's a maintenance item. Uh, anytime you have a masonry building, it's a maintenance, not a, you know, so much a repair, it's just one of those maintenance items that you have to do. Uh, there was, uh, thirty-nine thousand square feet of floor prep that was included in that number, uh, knowing that, you know, when they went in there, depending on where the, uh, facilities would be located, you know, they would have to do work in the floor, but there's the floor prep which would include grinding and leveling and, and making it useful for putting down new flooring, so basically all the items, you know, or I won't say basically, all of the items that were in the report, when we look at, you know, when they did an estimate for, uh, reconfiguring that building, all those items fall into those numbers.
Who did an estimate? What, I, I'm confused. Who did an estimate for what?
What was the name of the, W S M, which was the?
Riley, yes.
Riley Construction, when we did the, uh, cost estimate to remodel the facility to make it a police department.
And that was, those things were included with prep for the building, you think?
Yes.
What is that, what, so the stuff that's in the Jan Dusa report, though, do we have a number based on how much that stuff is gonna cost us?
They had not provided any numbers, like I said, they were looking at that, this was just pure maintenance work and would be handled during the time that we're in there doing our construction.
My question, though, is a little bit more specific. I understand Jan Dusa didn't give us an estimate, but have we gone and said, "Here's the work that needs to be done," to a general contractor to get a number? I mean, you're saying it's, it should be within our numbers, but how do we know that without looking at something more thoroughly?
Microphone, please.
We're gonna make you get up.
Aaron from Riley Construction was on vacation, just got back from vacation. I had talked to him, he was gonna look over the information and get back to me. I haven't heard back from him yet.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I think before this gets voted on tonight, we should have that information from Riley Construction to know what this is gonna cost. I mean, we're being told it should be within what we've estimated for the remodel, but I think it, you know, we should go in the proper steps and make sure, like, look, these things that he's claiming are not structural, have the guy come out and give us the estimate, maybe he sees something a little different. I'm not convinced that some of the things he's pointing out are, um, are minor. Um, I've, I did vote for the project, but I just wanna make sure we're doing it right, and, you know, I'd like to know what that number's gonna be before we vote on it. You know, it was just like taking over the park and hidden, hidden ridge. I mean, just a, just a ballpark figure of what it's gonna cost us to take over the park was, you know, something we should've known. And this is the same thing, I don't think we can vote on accepting this until we know what that cost is.
So I, I guess, man, what I'm asking is, is how, do you want them to do a whole construction estimate of what it's gonna cost to repair it?
Well, they've got the Jan Dusa report, I mean, they should be able to go through and just walk around, I mean, any general contractor can give you a, a ballpark.
They already gave us ballpark numbers, right? They already gave us those numbers back several months ago of what it would cost to rehab the building so that they could put the police department in there. So we already have those numbers and it's included in the ten million dollar estimate.
Yeah, and that's where we were looking at, um, this particular report. Um, the, our biggest concern was the roof, frankly, and that's why we asked specifically for them to look at what the, the cost estimate would be there. The other items that were listed in the report were things that were anticipated in the remodel construction, and there was no big red flags there, so you know, we didn't go back and ask specifically for estimates because they weren't major items, and they were essentially anticipated in that original remodel construction estimate.
So, so the things that Jan Dusa noted, like redoing all the flooring and all this tuck pointing work and all this, was part of the Riley, because I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know.
When they, when they looked at what, what it would take to rehab the building, that, you know, they looked at different elements of what it would take, and so as Mark, Mark has the specifics, he can better speak to it, but he talked about they had the, um, the, um, maintenance of the, for the tuck point, point, tuck pointing, the, um, repainting of the walls to take care of the effervescence, um, and the different element, this grinding of the floor space, um, floor prep and things of that nature, so they weren't major items that was a big red flag as far as we were concerned. We were most concerned about the roof because we knew if there was anything big there, that would be a larger cost, and if it was going to be well over what we estimated, we wanted to make sure we gave that information to the council, so you had that, so that's what we addressed.
Did the estimate from Riley also incorporate the mechanicals for the facility?
Yes.
All the mechanicals, air conditioning, heating, all those things were all incorporated into the, to the estimate that we have already for, to get the building to, conditioned to put a police department in it.
What was the total estimate for that? Do we know what the total estimate for all the rehab work and?
Well, the total was, it's like ten million. I, I.
No, 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 this, that, ten million was just the budget.
Well, it was all part of the rehab. It was all part of the same budget.
But what, was that included, that, the land acquisition? It was ten, ten million cut? Yeah, the number that sticks in my head, it included land acquisition, and it was north of ten million, if you recall, but this council has said, "We're gonna try to work to keep that lower," but the estimate was higher than the ten million that you all talk about.
It was thirteen.
Oh, it wasn't thirteen.
It was eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half million. Thank you, chief.
I, I would also, the, the standard, um, floor prep and grind would be for, uh, normal, normal conditions, but in the report, it identifies that there was freeze and thaw associated with that floor, and, and that leads me to believe that that could present additional concerns for additional costs associated with, with preparation. And just like any rehab of a commercial building or a residential building, to, to put it in something that you may have gone through, once you get into it, you're gonna discover potentially things that you, uh, may not have anticipated. The freeze thaw, um, the mold remediation, the, the inability to really thoroughly evaluate the roof based on winter conditions from the exterior have me concerned as well. And, you know, again, the council's will is what it is, and if we end up having to go back to the community and say, you know, "We were gonna try everything we could to get it within our ten million dollar budget, but we're gonna need an additional two," you know, that's something we're gonna have to, to be comfortable with. And I don't think we have the ability to do that right now, potentially, with raising that building and putting it up front and maximizing the utilization of that, and gaining the, the, the additional revenue from the sale of that, offsetting the costs of raising that building could keep us in, uh, within budget.
So you're, you're suggesting spending two million to buy it, rip the building down, put a building up in front and sell in the back for
I think, if we, if we purchase the property for two million fifty thousand dollars and.
With a building on it.
With a building on it. And then propose where we would place the police station closer to Wisconsin, and what kind of footprint would be required to meet that twenty-five year plan, which is less than the forty thousand square foot footprint that currently exists in the Century Building, accommodating for the parking, and then, um, proper, proper additional space between the, the two properties, identifying what that would be, selling that off for private development, um, and letting them raise that building, we'd still be money ahead.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing that. I just, I guess I don't see the dollar figures on that. I'm not in favor of spending two million fifty thousand dollars to buy that property and then tear the building down. I'm not. I'm in, I'm in favor of spending that money, um, using the existing building, making that work for the police station we want, and I still wanna try to keep it under that ten million. I'm, I'm looking more at eight, you know, eight, nine million dollars.
That would, that would be nice. I, I just, I don't necessarily see that in, from some of the discussions I've had, you know, if, if we can sell that lake frontage off for approximately a million dollars, that offsets the cost of the total acquisition of that property for.
I just don't wanna talk about what we might be able to get for that property because it's a condemnation situation. I don't want us to end up something in the minutes related to, you know, what.
Sure. Hypotheticals, whatever we get for that, if it was in, uh, it's, it's more than what we would get if we didn't sell off a portion of the property that we're acquiring, and we've identified as council that we would not, um, sell off the front lot because we didn't want anything additional going in front of the police station.
Let, let's move on because that's.
Yeah, because why, why didn't, why was this not brought up?
No, it was brought up.
It was.
No, they asked for that.
They asked for that. They asked for parti- parcels. Jeff?
I was just gonna comment that I agree with Charlie on this, and, and there are other, I think, avenues, and there are other ideas for, um, possibly, you know, going back to revisiting some issues with the courts and some other ideas that I would present at a different meeting when it's agendized. But, um, it doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about tonight, and that is the offer on that building, and I, I still think it's a good deal, and I would like to move forward with it.
Well, if we're gonna move forward, we need a motion to act on the results of the.
I'll make that motion.
You make the motion. Okay, just hold on a second. There are motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, Kevin.
I also agree with Charlie. The only concern that I have is, um, looking at the, the ceiling, uh, the, um, and the repairs that may be required. I, I think that's semantics. The bottom line here is, they, um, they're gonna be, um, repairs to, to that roof. There's no, they're saying maybe, but at, at the end of the day, we're gonna have some issues with that. Is, is that, is that part of the ten million, or is that?
That was part of the ten million dollar estimate. Any other discussion? So we have a motion to second on the floor to approve the results of faci- facility analysis for six thirty East Wisconsin Avenue. Does this then remove?
That would include the authorization for the city to remove the contingencies related to the inspections. In other words, we have until the end of this month to, um, say we're backing out because we don't like the results of the inspection, so if you approve this motion, it will authorize me to advise that, um, the seller. So, if you approve this motion, it will authorize me to advise that the sellers, that we are waiving contingencies related to that. And I don't, we still will be getting all of our title work to make sure that, you know, we're good with all of it.
That was my motion.
I heard him say it. So, we have a motion to second on the floor, call the roll place?
You know, if we don't, if we accept it, we're saying, though, too, that we don't care that there's roof repairs needed, even though it was part of our estimate. We don't wanna go back to these guys and say, "Look, we think the whole roof's gotta be repaired," I mean...
You still wanna negotiate? Tell me whatever you want, I mean, I think that...
Yeah, of course, I mean, I'm always game to negotiate, but...
No, no, I'm just telling you, well, I don't wanna talk about negotiations in open session.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion to second on the floor, call the roll place?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Moving on, under new business, consider act on settlement agreement between the City of Oconomock and ORP Real Estate Holdings LLC. Need a motion to approve the settlement.
So moved.
Second.
For you tonight is the settlement agreement between ORP Real Estate Holdings and the, and the city. This is regarding their excessive assessment claim. Currently, the settlement that's, that we have tonight is for two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollar assessed value. So, currently, it is at two-point-eight million dollars. Their claim is that it should be one-point-nine million dollars. Through the efforts of negotiation and appraisals, the attorney and the insurance company has come to a settlement of two-point-three-five million dollars, which affords ORP Real Estate Holdings a total refund of twenty-three thousand nine-hundred-and-eight dollars. That's about eight thousand dollars a year for the years two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen. Of that, about twenty-four thousand dollars, the city portion of that is seven thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, and the, the remaining balance is billed back to the other taxing jurisdictions.
Okay, thanks, Laurie.
Is that the basketball card out there? Now, how can one keep paying, I mean, this is about the fourth or fifth person that's getting refunds from us. Who's doing the assessing that, why, and I don't understand.
There is now, this is one of the largest areas developing in law. There are claims being made everywhere across this state for tax refunds. Lawyers are now taking these on contingent fees, so they'll get a third or whatever they are able to save their clients. You know, assessing real estate at, at velorem tax is not an exacting science, and I could go on for about, you know, two hours talking about, no, I'd love to.
Yeah, yes, please.
But, the bottom line is, is, is kinda like, okay, in the old days, there was a lot of money being made in auto accidents, and there still is, not as much, but that's why you have all these lawyers on TV. This is a big area now, because it just is. You can't necessarily fault your assessor, your assessor probably has enough time to spend about ten to fifteen minutes on every single parcel in the, you know, in the city per year. And, you don't, you don't have an in-house assessor for that very reason, because it costs a lot of money, that's why you go out house. And, I don't wanna say it's a cost of doing business, you could take a hard line and say, "We're gonna fight every single one of these." Or, you can, you know, go this route. You've got insurance coverage, fortunately, that pays all the costs of defense, so it's not out of your pocket to pay those costs. If you didn't, it would be pretty expensive, because these cases will run maybe forty, fifty thousand in defense costs each and every one of them. So, you know, you got a recommendation from your, from your insurance counsel, I wasn't there, I haven't analyzed the appraisals, I don't even know what we're talking about, but that's your lawyer is recommending approval.
So, guys like you and Matt are benefiting off of all this good stuff, eh?
All right, I just represent you, I fight these things.
That was only a joke.
Let's stay on this agenda. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
A motion to second on the floor to approve the settlement agreement, call the roll place?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Okay, next is consider act on amendment to the developer's agreement for Silver Lake Trails, we need a motion to approve the amendment.
Make a motion to approve the amendment?
Second.
Let's do explain this. Lucas is gonna explain it?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Lucas K, and I'm senior utility engineer. Subdivision Silver Lake Trails was completed earlier this year, and upon completion of the work itself, we were reviewing the record drawings, and some of the utilities were not installed as, as designed, so the utility and the city worked with the developer and the contractor to come up with amendment...
Lucas, you wanna pick the microphone up?
To cover the cost, if something were to happen with the utilities that were installed, the contractor would come back and make those repairs. We basically extended the warranty period, that typically comes with a development, so before you, that's, that's what there is.
Any questions?
What does the warranty typically cover? Because right now, it's extended after fifty percent of the homes, five years after.
Typical warranty period is one year from the date of completion.
From the date of completion, or fifty percent so of the units?
No.
The date of completion of the subdivision. So, this doubles it for all the water, and then it increases it to five years for the portion of the sanitary sewer that was under question.
Cause it was, so there's a sag or something in the...
Correct, there's a sag in the line.
Is it, doesn't say how much, is it much, or is it...
No, most, if I can, most every other municipality that I work with would just say, "Oh, fine." But we, we're the gold standard, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Honestly.
Okay.
This is good for us.
Charlie?
Yeah, my initial reaction to this was, you know what, if it's not put in right, tear it out, do it again, you know? But in discussions with Tom Steinbach, Tom Steinbach, Mark Brey, they're comfortable, very comfortable with the repairs that were made. These are repairs that would normally be done for any kind of leak, that type of thing, so they're gonna last anyway.
Well, they weren't talking about a leak, they were talking about trying to push stuff uphill, it sounds like.
The sewer one, it, this, the sag that they're talking about, as Tom said, it's very slight, it is not worth worrying about.
Okay.
Two tenths of an inch, I believe.
That's correct, yes.
Two tenths of, do you hear that? Two tenths of an inch?
Quarter inch per foot of drop.
Just one little sag.
One little sag, one little pipe.
Okay, just one little sag, not like it's over a long run, okay.
One area, and that's not that big of a subdivision anyway, so...
That's fine, I'm just asking...
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion, second on the floor, call the roll place?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Excuse me.
Aye.
Alderman, thank you. Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Okay, next item is consider act on Hidden Ridge Park Agreement, we need a motion to approve the Hidden Ridge Park Agreement.
So moved.
Seconded, we discussed this, you wanna...
Sure.
A little overview?
Absolutely. Hit, we, the city has a subdivision in the city, Hidden Ridge subdivision, that was created in the nineteen seventies over in the Old Tower Road area. The, it's a unique situation in where the, when the subdivision was created, there is an interior open space area that the HOA, in their declaration of restrictions, was given the responsibility to maintain, but the ownership retained in the city's name. They have maintained it all of these years, there's some larger structural maintenance, we'll, we'll call it, that raised the question, and the HOA came to the city to question the responsibility for that. With being a unique situation of the city owning it and the HOA maintaining it, we thought we should more clearly define those responsibilities going forward. The city was concerned of continuing to own it, with the maintenance being in, in the private party's hands for liability reasons, so we talked about the option of the city retaining ownership and taking over maintenance or deeding it over to the HOA, and letting them take care of the maintenance responsibilities. They, that as a homeowners association, have voted to turn it over to the city, so therefore, there is the attached agreement that outlines kind of the history, and the city would be taking over maintenance responsibilities and do that in a manner consistent with our other park facilities, and agree not to especially assess that area for those costs and treat it just like we would any other park maintenance, so. With that, the committee, the whole met and discussed this and recommended approval. Yes, there were, thank you, there were two, there were a couple of amendments to the agreement, a clear, cleanup of a typo with an additional word, the, the addition of the tower within the subdivision that we would, we would have the ability to take it down in an emergent, emergency situation if applicable, and removal of every reasonable effort to remove the word "every," and just make reasonable effort to maintain the tower.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we have the motion to second on the floor, call the roll place?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zwart?
Aye.
Alderman Stray?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Okay, under staff reports, Sarah, are you gonna have a report on the strategic plan request for proposal?
Yes, with twenty eighteen now underway, we are looking forward to kicking off our strategic planning process for the city. The council had approved, moving forward with a process in twenty eighteen, so requests for proposals are out. We, they're due back January twenty-sixth, and we'll be evaluating those and bringing those forward to the council for consideration in February, and then, we would expect that we, would, the consultant that we decide to work with, that will have some additional working sessions potentially with the council in conjunction with staff to help us create that vision and mission for the city, and look forward to defining what our objectives and strategies will be for the next three to five years, so work on our vision. So, just wanted to report on that, and that will be coming back to you in February.
Thank you. Any other, any other staff reports?
No, there is not.
Reports and comments from Alderman? Move.
Just like to make a comment in general, to be on record, that as we move into two thousand eighteen, there, there is a part of the community that, that really likes the nostalgia of the community and doesn't wanna see things change. However, we have seen in the last few weeks, some announcements of some major closings, and not only here in our community, but the Sam's Club closing in West Dallas, and, and the continued evolution of, of communities throughout the state. It's our, it's our obligation to the community to make sure that we are proactive, and I believe this council has been proactive and has the best interest of the community in mind as we take a look at the areas that are, are being impacted. And I'd, I'd ask the community to continue to engage and come in and let us know what their thoughts are as these opportunities come up, and I think as the strategic planning and the overlays and the proactive elements that we're putting in place come about, the community will be pleased to see what comes into the community as a whole as we continue to look for family-friendly quality of life enhancements.
Thank you, Lou, any other comments? Seeing none, comments from the mayor. First off, I'd like to wish the city, it's a happy one-hundred-and-forty-third anniversary as a city today. It happens to be specifically today, so, it was eighteen sixty-five? Eighteen seventy-five, eighteen seventy-five when the city was incorporated as a city.
No, but Bob Morgan did, that's why he went home early to go to bed.
And I also'd like to reiterate what Lou said, and, and we're all sad to see the, the news with Olympia closing.
Yeah, it's giddy up on that.
But one of the reasons why we continue to do what we're doing with, with new developments and bringing new things into the city is to, things change. I mean, people don't like change, but things do change. We are looking at, we, we have the study, we're looking for proposals coming in soon for a study for that whole corridor down by Olympia, Kmart, that whole area down there, to come up with a vision of what we can do there, and hopefully, we'll, we'll, someone will come in and, and acquire that property and work with us so that we can make that part of town as good as what we're doing with the downtown area, so. It is a challenge right now, but I think it's gonna be an opportunity in the future to, to give us more and makes Oconomock a better place to live, so. That's the only comments I have, the only other thing is to adjourn, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.